Okay.
Good. Well, meeting the more county board commissioners work session to order. Uh, we have one item on the agenda today. It is the campus committee for a new fair site. So not sure.
Yeah, I'll say yes, yes, thank you. So yes, I'm Corey Sweeney, Mayor Hepner, assisted with John Doherty, our city administrator. And we are representing Hepner, more specifically, the Economic Development Committee of Hepner. And we have worked with the Fair Board and the Rodeo Committee to uh expand and develop here in Hepner. That's our goal mission is to to expand and to grow for growth in Hepner. And our our committee has been looking at ways to uh for growth. And we've we've really been dealing with the floodplain and floodway issues with our growth. And we've been trying to um combat some of those issues. And um uh, there are um things in play now that are opening up, you know, possibilities for expansion in Hepner and growth in Hepner. Specifically, the the mill site with it coming out of the floodway with the project and the grant. Um, and we um we got with the Fair Board and the rodeo and um tried to come up with a way to to increase the facilities, to uh expand with acreage and to um to combat some of the issues with um with parking, traffic, and um some of the issues with the fair. So we agreed to all come on board for a solution. And one of those solutions was looking at the mill site. And uh, our investigation into the mill site is that um we we can use a space there of maybe 25 acres, allowing another 45 acres for continued industrial growth and um zoning for industry uh and have plenty for upgrades in facilities of the fair and even rodeo. And the reason we chose that was um for one, the acreage, two, uh, not being able to acquire more property. For expanding at the current place it's at and the floodway currently. One of the issues um currently, the county has a $1.3 million, you know, grant for upgrades. And in that floodway, um it's it's hindered with one new growth, no new growth in the floodway. But um, the grandfathered buildings in such as the annex, you're limited to only half the cost of the uh, the building to to invest into new improvements, which would, if it's invested at $300,000, you'd be looking at like 150,000 in upgrades. And we'd like to see the maximum use of the 1.3 million for for an upgrade. Uh, maybe that could be used out into out at the mill site for that. Um, maybe not, maybe there's a way um to, you know, to combat some of the flood issues there um at the fairgrounds. Uh, but it's real tricky and um space is tight and it's 10 acres currently at the fairgrounds. And up to 25 acres at the mill site would be a great improvement, a great investment for the future and um and a needed um needed growth that 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 we're experiencing. So um, that's what we're looking at. We're we're all on board. We have several more steps to take to get other people on board, including the county. But um, our talks with the port, um, we've been talking to the port, just asking about the mill site, you know, and about um what's been going on their last 20 years. And and we're we're convinced that um, and not through their opinion, but their answers that they have given to us from interest groups at the mill site is that it's it's too far, it's too far from water, it's too far from rail, it's too far from interstate. And it's hard to 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 really get people um to to commit to that. So um, we're trying to concentrate on the quality of living in Hepner. Uh, we're experiencing a lot of, our growth is from people wanting to live here and travel. Seventeen percent of our workforce travels daily, 30 miles or more, 30 minutes or more. Uh, but we're having, we're experiencing uh, issues with good jobs here where people are not willing to live out of town, 30 minutes or more away and travel to Hepner for work. So we are trying to get um quality of living here in Hepner, build on that, build on expansion and build on growth. And the Fair Board, the City of Hepner and the rodeo are committed to to growing and to working on a solution and compromises. Um, and that's kind of why we're here today. And um yeah, and um, John may have some other things to fill in, but.
Um, as far as the visuals go, I just, um, these are ones that we use at our Economic Development Committee or our ad hoc city committees. Um, just to show what the the current landscape is with, the first one shows where the floodplain and floodway is um, just specifically on the fairground side. Um, and as far as the fairgrounds currently go, the fairgrounds are outside of the city's both uh, city limits and urban growth boundaries. So any development outside of, you know, basically the line where the new courthouse will will be. Um, you know, we have, it's outside of our purview. We have no um say in what goes on out there. But if you would continue to go towards the the east into the Hoskins property, um, there is a similar situation near the highway does have some areas in the um, the yellow that is outside of the floodplain, there's a bench up there, but there's there's limited potential for growth in that area. Um, the second one, I just snapped some lines. I'm not a, I'm not a GIS tech, I'm not a draftsman. I just snapped some lines to roughly figure out what the square footage acreage is out there. So when you take up uh, the football field, there's roughly 10.3 acres. Going towards the mill site, uh, a map of how it currently sits over that, um, you know, 80 to 90 acres that is on the creek side of the highway. And then um, I had a couple visuals, I just snapped some lines of what would look like if the area towards the um south, the southern and the city side of that property was to be developed into uh, fairgrounds, rodeo, multi-use area, um, you know, roughly, like I said, I'm not a draftsman, I just snapped a couple lines. Um, running a straight line off of the current area that's occupied by uh, Greenup Industries and some for Silk Street. Was 21 and change, and then that left 45 acres of of land that will be outside of the floodplain after mitigation work. Um, and that doesn't take into account the 35 acres that is on the other side of the highway. Now that isn't all completely developable with um, some of the topography and things in there. But but there is still quite a bit of land developable there. Um, Porta Moro, um, just, you know, this is not putting words in anyone's mouth or any commitments on anything. But, you know, they they are going to develop the the well on the ODFW DMV side of the highway with some of the funds that they had available after the mitigation work was completed. They don't have, the last time I spoke with the port, they didn't have any plans on distribution, um, reservoirs, et cetera. But they were planning on boring a line under the highway. That is a 450 gallon per minute well. So you would have um, quite a large availability of water. I think it's something that could definitely, um, you know, we're, I don't see us ever having another lumber mill. Um, and like Corey led with logistically not having barge, rail and freeway. We're we're probably not going to have any heavy industry that um, will settle in this area. Looking at that available land, it's the onesies and twosies, um, you know, hopefully a five to 10 employee industrial could house in that area. We currently have oil fab and we have Blue Mountain, um, things like that where they're not reliant on 10, 20 semi-loads per day um, would be available in that area and still leave, I mean, 45 acres, that's, that would be nine five acre tracts. If if someone were to be interested in developing that land. I think it still leaves us a large area on both sides of the highway. Um, and then also gives us the the growth potential for the fair and rodeo. Um, as it currently sits, um, we knew there was going to be growing pains with the courthouse going in there. And I had reached out to, two years ago, to some rodeo board members. And I said, you know, if if you wanted to look at something, the mill site could be a possibility. And as it sits right now, we're going to have a split fair and rodeo week. And I believe both the fair and the rodeo would like to be the same week, just for attendance, for tradition, everything else. Um, I think utilizing some of the former mill site for this um, fair and rodeo arena um project could also, I mean, as we sit right now, when you look at the uh, like second page, um, you know, 10 acres, but it's not all in a block. It's, it has its own um issues there with just transportation. Whereas if you're out at the mill site, you know, having a 20-ish acre area, it would be much easier for transit. And the, I think you could have a much um, more efficient use of the land out there. Um, and I think um, with, you know, the the growth in the last 20 years of rodeo sports, uh, specifically to roping and barrel racing, I think um, that facility could have not everyday use, but I think it could have um, a lot more use than what we currently have at our arena at the uh, at the current fairgrounds, just because, I mean, I've I've been at these barrel races where 400 barrel racers, they roll in, they barrel race, and then when they're done, if they're not getting a check, they're out the door. But, you know, as we sit currently, some of those types of um, events are really difficult to to hold out there. And the the racing, the barrel racing, the the roping events, I mean, they happen all over the Northwest, all over the West. And I think Judy can attest to, those people travel a lot. That's that's part of that lifestyle. But I think it just, it would lend to future possibilities of increased events like that outside of just the rodeo weekend.
To to uh, the the rodeo experienced the highest attendance ever. And uh, the fair uh, received almost $1.2 million um, for the kids. And when we look at it, we think that's a million dollar investment every year that could go out to the mill with those kids. And with with the fair, we think that's a good investment for our county. When it's a third year again, a third petner, a third boardman of those participants. Um, we just think it's a really good use of of acreage and um, and community development for the whole county.
I guess, was there anything else you had to add?
I I think that's kind of for.
I guess my question is, before we, you know, move move forward is, what do, how do, what do you envision the county's role in all this?
So that's a great question. We envision the county's role as um, as being a partner and asking some tough questions that that come to you, the public, that we can answer, that we can try to get to the bottom of. Our ultimate goal is to um to make this work for for everybody and to to uh to keep the rodeo um, and fair on the same weekend to have growth and to um to update the facility. So the county's aspect long term would be uh monetarily feasibility for the rodeo or for the fairgrounds improvements. Um, money committed from the county for infrastructure, for some growths, maybe to put into the strategic planning of your long-term capital investment plan. That that would be, that would be a big part of it. Second part would be um representing the county um voting base and and actually, you know, hearing and responding to us what the what the county wants and sees and and um.
What you envision us, the county owning that property?
The the county purchasing maybe the property or during the lease, that's part of this work session too, a lease agreement through uh, the port or purchasing 20 acres or whatever it may be. And and there's some, there are some, uh, there's some hurdles to go through. It might not even be feasible that that grant that is out there for opening up that floodway was was a grant for industry improvement, and this would not be industry improvement. So uh, yeah.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Yes, I wrote that, that was from Business Oregon, and it was for $2 million. Uh, I've worked with the Porta Moro to do this flood mitigation for seven years because you can't do anything out there. It's kind of a cat, it's a chicken in the egg, you know, we're not, no one's doing anything, but they couldn't do anything. So that's a $2 million grant for economic development, not specific for industry, I don't think. But it was to develop the industrial land for use for economic development. And I don't know if this falls into that, that would be a question. But on top of all of that, um, I have a couple of things about the map. And as John said, he just drew a line, which I could tell looking at it. So the flood mitigation at the Porta Moro um, is going to be all on, what they're doing is they're trenching, they're digging a swell along the entire east side of Willow Creek, the length of that property. Because currently FEMA map show and modeling, which this has never occurred, but this is what we're working with, that the water is going to come out of the creek in a high uh, an event. And it's going to sheet across that whole property. And then they show a hump before it drops down into that alfalfa field. And it's going to all back up. And that's why everything's in the floodplain. None of that really exists, probably will not happen, but you can't get FEMA to change maps, it's impossible. Try it. So when you look at this map of the 21.65 acres, there's no mitigation in that entire southeast or southwest, sorry, all the mitigation's on the west side of the creek. There's no mitigation being done. See where the creek is, where the dark trees are? There's no mitigation there. Cannot, you're not going to be able to use, probably looks like about eight, nine acres, about 21. So now you don't have that acreage because you can't, I mean, it would be very difficult to do anything there. Also, the mitigation takes out, doesn't take the creek out of the floodplain, nor about this, a a certain amount of width on the side of the creek, just the property outside of that swell to the east. So this map is really, it it doesn't, you have the same thing you have where you are by the time you're done. So um, because you can see up in there. The the step to the to the west of all of that will be open for development. But everything over here is going to be part of the mitigation. So half of that map that you're showing for 21 acres.
Is that like 10?
Is probably 11 or 12 maybe, but I can't tell because I don't know how much that yellow part, which is the swell, is going to take out. But it's it's substantial. So.
Yeah.
So now you're, now you're not taking 21 out of 40, out of the, you're you're not even going to have to take 30, right? To make up for that loss?
No, I'm sorry, that that was included in our.
You didn't plan to develop that?
No, no, that'd be contested parking, like what we're losing at the rodeo, that that'd be a good.
So you're going to put a bridge in?
Uh.
Because that's on the other side.
We we may have.
To in any capacity, which we're going to develop in any.
On the other side?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, we we were thinking about that a bridge would probably have.
And then you'll use this over here unless they've trenched it, because I can't tell. That, all that, all that yellow was the dirt they're digging out. So I'm saying you're losing a lot of that. I don't know you can use that. That's going to be a big bridge too, but you got to come across the trench. Anyway, just a thought, okay? That's my one thought. Um, I don't know about your saying that I, I guess my biggest thought is, this whole entire project, besides the development of it and the planning with Anderson Perry, is going to be about $1.6 million. It's 3,700 lineal feet of mitigation where they're digging all of that dirt out. And it's going to be 1.6 million plus the planning. I think it would be a big boon to our entire community if we looked at doing the same thing at the fairgrounds. I mean, the fairgrounds is 1,600 lineal feet. It's less than half of the mitigation area that it would be at the mill. So you're probably looking around a million dollars. And then I would, I would, I would talk about talking to the Mid Columbia bus and going back to Matt, who will, uh, Matt Hoskins, who won't be tainted by the just, the overtaking of the rodeo, all the stuff that was political at that time. He would probably be, you'd be able to discuss with him, increasing the fairgrounds for the community. He's more likely to want to do that, you know? I don't think he's a definite no, people say that, but I've had a lot of really productive conversations with him. He's a generous person if it's to benefit the community. Then you have more acreage than you have down at the rodeo grounds. You don't have to give up your Wilkinson Arena, you're not stepping on people's toes. And you have all of the infrastructure. And actually, it would be really big benefit to the rodeo grounds because then they could have a bathroom. I mean, you could put utilities in, which is, it's a really kind of a hassle having everything in the floodway. And I do not think, Anderson Perry could take a look in two days, tell you how hard that's going to be to do. And it would really change the entire course in town. We're keeping the rodeo in town. It's not impacting other areas that are being developed. You don't have to worry about moving all the infrastructure in the buildings. You know, you're looking more at like, it just would have to be a much less investment out there than changing and starting all over with everything, plus upsetting some people, you know? My thought, I think it's very doable. You can see what's happening here. And um, so it is completely doable. And and what the thing is, is you can't do the mitigation and push the water onto the people on Quaid Street, but it doesn't, it's just channeling what they say is going to come out of the creek and then it goes back into the creek. So whatever water comes out will be the same amount of water that goes back in. It's not having any impact below those floodplains, not helping them, but it's not hurting them. And now you have an entirely another place that you can do things. And then we go to show and we fix chase trace. We go down somewhere along Riverside, fix that. And pretty soon we can, we, because I I'm beating my head against the wall for remapping it, and I just don't see it, and so is John. But mitigating is possible. And the thing with the mit, with the fairgrounds, the mill site never had any floodplains. There's never been a flood there, but it was all in the floodplain. But the fairgrounds has had several floods and FEMA has lots of grants. And if you have had floods, you will, you qualify. If you have not, you do not. So there's money there to help. And also, you know, there's probably lots of, I would be happy to help look for grants for that kind of situation. And I think it would be a big benefit to everybody to try and do that. Just a thought. And I have one more thing, and then I'm going to be quiet.
So let me ask you a question. So are you saying the only way to really, how many acres would we gain by mitigation if we don't get Hoskins?
Well, I don't know, I didn't map that.
What would be your guess?
Well, oh, to get out of the floodplain, you mean? Well, you're going to keep the same amount of acreage that you have, but if it was out of the flood, well, I mean, because it's all used by.
Okay, so if you're out of the floodplain, then then the fairs buildings could be
Oh, well, first of all, that that comment wasn't exactly correct. It is 50% if you don't do any floodproofing. Floodproofing, they're not buildings that are being lived in. So if you're not changing the footprint of them, you can improve them. You just have to put vents or else, you know, do a something that would help to keep the water to go around them and not through them. So you can, then you can do whatever you want inside. If you go over 50% of the value of the building itself, then you have to um, floodproof. That's the only thing, but it does make it really complicated. But if you mitigate it and you did it and you could do it correctly, and I, I'm not, I don't know this because I'm not Anderson Perry, but then you could take all of these buildings and all of the arena and your building, because they'll go right along the creek. And if you started at Hoskins, then you're taking taking more water out, you're diverting it. So now you have, you have all this area here.
So I'd like to interrupt for a moment. Uh, so who called this work session?
So this was requested as part of a uh, an interest party, uh, Mayor Sweeney and John Doherty asked for it. We put it, it was originally put in as a regular uh, presentation item for the VOC. Uh, because of the interest in the uh, preliminary nature of it, we put it in as a work session uh, to more or less have an open discussion. Um, as a, as this is a fairly complex issue and hits different things, we invited different individuals. We made sure the fair and rodeo were were here as well as Wickbed. We did invite the port leases out traveling and uh, Chair Murray was going to attend. Um, he was in between vaccination clinics, so I don't know if he's able to uh, zoom in or not.
Well, it sounds like he's doing.
So uh, part of this is um, as we look at this, um, this is a big lift. And with some of the uh, relocation thoughts of other county facilities, it's had a major impact on the community. Um, we wanted to make sure we had a clear understanding of a buy-in and challenges that are there. Uh, I don't see this work session as being something where we make a determination, but more or less saying, is there interest, is there value to even just study the feasibility of this? To quantify some of the things that, you know, whether whether there's space there. Uh, one of the challenges, I did have an opportunity to talk to Chair Murray from the port, is um there's no master plan for that Kinzu mill site. It'd be really nice if there was, whether that included the fairgrounds or not, just to say, this is what we're looking at past this point of flood mitigation. We also need to do the same thing with our fairgrounds. And so if we need to just look at the areas uh, along the current location, or if we should um, we should entertain a second, or you know, a second side option. Um, there's several hurdles that we that we must, or you know.
In some capacity addressed.
Yes, before we really get out in front of it. And uh, so the idea, uh, based on, you know, previous discussions from the Board of Commissioners is saying, we're not going to champion this. This is, you know, this is uh, not exactly a third realm for communication, but it's something that we want to make sure it comes from the community. Uh, that's where uh, Mayor Sweeney and John Doherty's interested in in doing it. And so they've, they've collected some interest on there. But there are challenges, the understanding of the flood mitigation down there mill site, the uh, the impacts on our current fairgrounds, the space limitations, which there's still uh, in ongoing discussions on how to go come that. uh, in ongoing discussions on how to go come that. And the fact that even if we wanted to do this, it will cost millions. And so how to approach that consideration, whether, you know, there's grant funding through uh, Business Oregon or, you know, uh, other, other facets. Those are all kinds of things that are going on. And uh, no matter what, you know, we've worked through on this, likely this is a five to fifteen year process on on facilitating this kind of item, but providing guidance so we can handle it through the capital improvement plan to understand those kind of things is a direction that um, that the uh, you know, economic development groups here is in questioning. Uh, on the same side, uh, there's hopes of bringing industrial space back into the mill site. And so balancing some of those items on a console that's not directly owned by the county is difficult. Um, we do have the, the management owner, they are aware of this discussion and, and really want to be involved in that. Uh, but uh, part of this is before county gets involved in that, it's, we need to understand what it is, see if you want to put any political will behind that to say, yes, let's do a feasibility, let's rule this out. Let's, let's uh, see what it would take to do these things and give direction and and funding to to do those initial steps. If there is no political will from the VOC, this is, you know, we continue looking at the current site. Flood, uh, you know, fortify it against floods, so we make sure we do our improvements that we need. And that creates a different capital improvement plan. So um, so this is with uh, with Corey and John's request, we just needed, and we figured a work session would be a better discussion.
Okay, thank you. I guess.
Long, long, many questions.
And uh, two, we, we discussed and we believe that the acquisition of the bus shed is attainable from the school district, along with the green space. Uh, the elementary, which will be available for sale in four years with the new bond and the new addition to K twelve up there. Um, so we think that those would be available in the future. But we still discussed that it wouldn't be quite enough expansion and upgrade. Unless we had um, buy-in from the landowner who was, as as Tim had mentioned, that that would be willing to invest in the community for uh, future forward.
Well, I could ask one question, you know? Whichever direction it goes, you guys are, your group and you guys are interested.
Yes.
In being involved, right?
Yes, we want to see it expand and grow.
County would be involved, can I say?
Yeah.
You express that, it would be either on the part of this property. So my thought is, our, our brand spanking new capital improvement advisory committee, which discusses our representative. Danny's on it, Matt's on it, you know, we have representation. And it's set up for this type of thing. You come in, people like him, rodeo, fair, you guys. And and this group, the advisory committee works to, you know, get some whatever, you know, whatever preliminary funding or whatever's needed and then brings it to the VOC rather than directly with this group trying to figure all this out, you see? So and so that's kinda, that's what I envision. That's what I envisioned with the capital improvement plan, because they're looking five years down the road. You know, and they're gonna talk about budget, you know, they're gonna have, they're gonna figure in budget, revenue streams that the county has. Maybe dig up some money for a feasibility study, you know? My thought is, you're gonna do a feasibility study at the mill. You gotta, you gotta know what it is you want down there, you know? I mean, because if you told the port, wasn't a feasibility study, it it would, it would not necessarily reflect what the community wants, you know? So once you kinda got an idea from this group, not this group, the, the advisory group, get involved, have all the, just like we are here. Then talk about a feasibility study, if that's the way you wanna go. If you stuck off with the fairgrounds out there, we're set up, same thing. Because, you know, there's, it, it's, because you guys wanna be involved throughout the process no matter where, way, right? As as development and.
Yes, yes.
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
Matt introduced me as here for Wickbit, which is, I am the chair for Wickbit, but I actually came as the um, certified floodplain manager for our community, because I understand.
Wear a couple of different hats.
Yeah, I know. And I don't like this one, but I'm tra- struggling to find someone to take it from me. But that, yeah.
Sounds like there's your fault, putting it on.
Well, somebody's gotta do it. We have problems here. And if you don't, you can't do anything if I'm not sitting here. So not me, if a floodplain manager isn't, doesn't have to be me. But anyway, um, that's why I came to explain the, what was happening at the mill site and what can happen anywhere. You know, that's how much stuff gets done. And I also wanna say I'm not opposed to this move. I am, I don't have an opinion on it. It, there is the question about um, what's happening. And the Port of Morals made no investments down there. And so it's impossible to figure or guess or anticipate what could possibly happen there when there's no site to build, no water and no sewer, and they just put power in a year ago. So it, I'm just saying, I would like to see them make an investment in our community and make it to where there's something that could happen there. But the reason that it looks like it does is because nothing can happen.
Yeah, oh. You're, you're still the chairman of Wickbit?
Yes.
Okay. Taking off your. Okay, being the chairman of Wickbit. Would, would you want, would you wanna be involved with this process?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So you, you need to be at the table at the, at the capital improvement.
I would like to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Cause you got Wickbit, you got, got a floodplain. I mean, I, everybody here needs have a plan on having budget coming in, you know, so, you know, at least the county, so. You know, anyway, that's, that's the way I, I would like to see this go. And then you guys can just bring us back a nice big beautiful plan, but I'm in the VOC decided to. Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And and it's not you guys is particularly to, you're, you're, I can see your main input is what does the community want, you know? And then if the county owns this property or leases, it's up to us to figure out the financing. So, you know, that's not your.
Yeah, right. No, no.
You're, you're valuable and bringing, and and Kim brings in uh, the development mindset from Wickbit plus the floodplain stuff, see?
Yeah.
And and then we, you know, we provide if, what, where the county would be involved as far as financing, revenue streams to do it, work it into our whole, uh, it's cause we got a bunch of stuff's gotta be done around the county, so.
Yes, yeah. And that's why uh, that's why we got on board first to make the first step, to start the process. To dev- develop that action committee to get everybody on board to um, to present to you a full plan with a plan moving forward and this is our first step.
What we might. If I'm wrong, I mean, is, I think we mentioned it to begin with, it's just a consensus from this group whether the county's interested in this.
I.
The uh, our advisory.
Yeah.
No, I, which is the county, which is us, you know, so.
Uh, I would have some major reservations about moving it before exploring if we could mitigate the flood zone where it's currently situated. Um, I'm not really in favor of moving it to somewhere else and then we're still stuck with that current fairground spot with, we can't do anything else with it. Um, I, that would be, I think, trading one problem for another. Um, so I would want that to be uh, thoroughly established, whether or not we couldn't address it where it is. Uh, it's my own uh, personal take, but I appreciate it being brought up that, you know, here, here are options uh, and the county improvement, no, the capital improvement, sorry, capital improvement plan committee is meeting tomorrow. So uh, well, then I'm sure it'll be one of the things that gets brought up, so thank you.
Yeah. I'm gonna touch on something Dave brought up, which ties in with something Kim brought up, is that, you know, has the fair committee or the fair board had any outreach on this? Because going back through the process that we've all gone through with citing the Circuit Court Building and along those lines, and this ties into what Kim said, is that when we were having some of those discussions about putting the Circuit Court Building out there and somebody somewhere had mentioned something about moving the fairgrounds, there were multiple people in this room very vocal about they were never going to want to see the fairgrounds moved from that site. So has the fair board reached out, done the outreach and gotten the buy-in? Or is it just a few people here in this room that are pushing this? Have you gotten the buy-in from the community? So then, so that's that aspect of it. The next thing is, is that, you know, admittedly, you guys acknowledge that, you know, this is something five, ten, fifteen years out before you could do something. But I hear talking about, we got a million dollars to do improvements out there. I don't think we can hold the state's money for fifteen years before we spend that money.
Yeah.
And if we do hold it for very long, personally, I think that it jeopardizes our ability to get money longer, because if you go out and you say, we need this money for a project there and you don't spend it in five years, that would tell me if I were in Salem in that sea. They don't really need it because we gave them money before and they never spent it. And so then the other problem that you get into is that I know with this grant, and I think that just in the time I've been here, we've seen something else that on some of those dollars that if you put that money into that building, you can't do anything with that building for twenty years. So I mean, these are just, you know, things that pop in my head that, yeah, I can see where, you know, you need the extra space and stuff. But you know, I appreciate what Kim talked about, you know? Other avenues to increase, take buildings out of the floodplain, be able to get more ground out there at the existing. It seems like that'd be a far less expense for the county.
I, I agree. I would like to see that more fully explored. And if that's something that is a viable option, then parade. Yes. And then if it's not a viable option, cross it off the list and say, okay, what's next?
Now, I guess it's gonna flip the script.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We wanna see growth and expansion. That's, that's in, in uh, better facilities. That's what we're, that's what we're about.
And it's awesome.
I mean, yes.
Right.
It is.
That, that is an awesome asset to the county to, to have a fair that is growing. Um, and so, yes, I think we, we are on the same page. We wanna see it grow and we want to continue to see that. Uh, just, we wanna make sure that
Well.
We use, explore all the options.
That's what we want to do too, and that's why we are here too, is we wanna put it out, you know? And and that we wanna get everybody on board and something that everybody can agree with and get on in behind. And then it's a much easier avenue. We're, we're, we're not, uh, yeah, we're not saying just let's move to the mill site, let's do that. Um, that was an option. That was what we came up with as a a move to grow, expand and available opportunity. Um, and if that is keeping current where we're at and acquiring land and um, yeah, mitigating, that would be great also. I, I think that would be.
Right. I just, I know this last fair, we were at max capacity, like, we couldn't take more sheep if we wanted to, like, max. Everything was maxed out, for sure.
So Commissioner Wenhold, too, um, I just wanted to say Shelby's on the, on the line and I don't know, Judy wants to. Shelby's um, the chair for the fair board. And Judy is a representative from, or I'm not sure if she's a chair, but she's with the rodeo board. So I'm not sure if you want input from them or not.
Sure.
I think my first question is that grant money that you have, could that be, I mean, was it specific? Or capital improvements? Could you use it for the studies at the?
And who has it?
It's in the.
So, so um, we have two grants. One has an amount for like two hundred thousand dollars and it has a termination date. And it can be used for capital improvements or master planning. Uh, we also received a million dollars, which they just gave us a check.
And that's been like two years.
It's just.
Sitting there.
Funding. And so there, it's not a grant in, they, they just allocated funding to us. And so that one, we have the money already in the bank, it's accruing interest. And yes, as Commissioner Wenhold said, you know, if we just keep it going, I mean, we have had calls from uh, from representatives and stuff, but saying, hey, what are you doing? Like, well, we got the first plan ready and, and this, uh, uh, quite honestly, I was unaware of the restrictions on making improvements to floodplain structures. And just found out about that yesterday and confirmed it with uh, with our planning department. And they're like, yeah, there is restrictions. It's fun, isn't it? And so uh, I don't think that was taken into consideration when we had our preliminary planning uh, that LRS did for us on, on these buildings. And so there's gonna be some additional costs in that that have to be taken into consideration. That said, we do have some, a pot of money that's in the budget for expenditure that we could look at a feasibility study, if it's just on this site, combo sites. You know, what, and it needs to be spent. We're looking at doing uh, the project for like the bathroom, but so if we can't, I mean, that bathroom building, the, the dorm building is not a very expensive building. So I don't think the improvements we have planned would be under the fifty percent threshold.
So upon the part of, you know, being asked, I know shortly after the money got allocated to us and then, I guess, it's been our first year. I know I got, I think they got emails from state people wanting to know where we had on. They'd like to have a big ribbon and show and see improvements based on the expenditures they've made. Yeah, I, I don't know if it can, they, I have to look through and I don't wanna state. I think there is a restriction on drainage. And whether that restricts us from using it for flood mitigation. I remember reading something like that, but I would ask for that. That's one of the things we can capital prove paving uh, studies to do that. We can't just buy equipment for it. It has to be capital things. But I think there is a caveat on drainage for some reason. So we'd have to look into that.
Yeah.
I think it's safe for me to say, um, on the rodeo side of it, we would like to see that site out there explored first if possible.
The current site?
We've already built a facility and we have a nice facility. And the thought of us going through that again, I mean, our facility is great. We just don't have parking to go with it. So if we could explore out there first, if we can use some of that grant money to do that, I think I would go with that option first.
When you say out there, you mean where you're.
At the current facility.
All right. She keeps pointing.
I know, and I'm like. But that's what you meant.
Yeah, that is what I meant.
Yeah. There's a lot of community involvement in that.
Yeah, I mean, I, we had a lot of funding uh, volunteers that built that. I mean, that total, I mean, that was totally on the committee building that in the community. Um, and not funded, you know, it wasn't funded through the county in any way, but, uh, I mean, it was. I shouldn't say that, but the majority of the money was from the community. And I think it would be, I mean, I know it's been several years by now, but I think we would take a lot of heat if we didn't explore options out there first.
Now, with the one point two million dollars, um, can that be used for real estate purchase? Cause I know, I mean, every grant has different handcuffs on it. I've got, you know, with a, a recreation grant, it, you have to have the land already. You can't use it to purchase land. So every, every state grant has, has different.
Unique.
Yes, on what you can do. And then you can find grants where you can purchase things. Um, but that would be an interesting um, point to look at, is if it could be used for purchasing. And like I said, you don't wanna um, get a whole bunch of people beaten on the door of property owners, but if there was possibility there for land that is adjacent to our current fairgrounds, if a mitigation process is feasible or allowable or et cetera, et cetera.
I wasn't looking at you, I was thinking, so that was not a Blair, that was a.
Only part is coming right there.
Yeah.
Here's to the, the current mill site is the first site to, I mean, preferred at this point. And I don't, I, I think we ought to just put it on you guys. Well, the capital improvement advisory committee. And I don't, I I think we ought to just put it on you guys, well, the capital improvement advisory committee. And I'd like to see, know about the contact list and get all these guys on there. Let them know, hey, we're going to be talking about this at this time and, we, you know, see the community involved, you know.
I I I think with uh, Judy's comments, it was the um, current.
Grounds.
Current.
Fairgrounds.
Location.
That's what he meant to say.
Okay, yeah, you you said mill site.
No, 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 the mill site, yeah, no.
Yeah.
The, no, it's the current site, yeah, that's that's the preferred site, so.
Um, I would have to say as well, um, I know we keep talking about this one point two million dollars, I know that looking at that might be the first step for sure, but like, there are still items that need immediate attention at the fairgrounds. Like our power source, like power between the rodeo grounds and the fairgrounds, like we're maxed out, we're constantly calling somebody every year to come fix something because it's not. So, I mean, some of that money I still think needs to go.
See, that fits right into where we're headed. Because this uh, our capital improvement plan, we we look at improvements and we all, we own that property. So it's already ours if they're, so to me, segueing that right into look at the whole thing, you know, do you want to change around how the buildings are laid out, whatever, you know.
Yeah.
And and I don't know if you can nail that on purchase on the other property to the east or not, but that.
I think.
Both those pieces.
I think so, I really do.
You know, I think you could, you could incorporate that into your plan.
Yes.
Say, okay, this, because that might change the whole way you're thinking about it, so.
Yeah.
So just for um, an update, the million dollar uh, allotment, say it's a grant, just a distribution um, is very broad, it just says uh, for fairgrounds, infrastructure. So it can be used for pretty much everything. Uh, the other one does say uh, capital improvements, does have a definition on that, which does uh, include acquisition of land, uh, machinery that will become an integral part of the structure planning activities, design, that kind of stuff. Acquisition of existing structures, it does not include maintenance, repairs, supplies and equipment that are not intrinsic to the structure, so we can't buy a tractor with it. Uh, furnishings, unless the furnishings are required in connection with the acquisition. So I'm not seeing that, that drainage issue that I, maybe that must be associated to another. There's only so many grants that you could possibly make. So um, definitely land acquisition with that one that we need to use by spring of next year. Um, design is possible, uh, the other, the million dollars one, it just says infrastructure. So I would imagine that has the same kind of uh, definitions as capital improvements, but it's not delineated to that agreement.
Somebody needs to get a hold of Anderson Perry.
We can do that, we gotta, we gotta agree with them now as a record of engineer.
Does the county have a rec, engineer of record?
Not currently.
Well, well, the city would be more than happy to proceed with this.
But somebody's got to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I understand.
Eighty thousand dollars.
But what I'm saying is is uh, to like, start with an action committee with WICVIT, with, you know, members of the fair and rodeo city are the all as a piece to present to you with options.
I'll present it to the VOC, you can present it to our.
I'm sorry.
C I G.
Yes, yes.
C I G.
Yeah, very, very much.
We're not set up to do that.
Yeah.
Have them all coming all the time. The this group is set up for that, that's what it's.
Correct, that's that's what we'll.
Yeah, and that's, but then they bring it to us when they get it.
Yeah.
For full approval, once they get, like I said, completely, because budgeting comes into, see? And so, you know, good, it isn't feasible for the VOC to be constantly, okay, what's the budget, what's your next plan, what's the steps? Because there's there's uh, talking and planning and everything needs to do this, that's what this was set up for.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping if the city wants to integrate with our incoming, that that's really good.
But that.
And I think with discussions I'd had with um, Matt and Vince prior to today, it was in in all essence, today was just a a brainstorm day, there's, you know, I know, obviously a work session, you're not going to, okay, sign something off, but it was just kind of seeing seeing what possibilities are and and looking at a direction.
You feeling that though?
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, we're going to focus on this right here.
Discussing with Matt and saying, you know, this isn't, we're not planning on, you know, new school opens fall of twenty nine and new rodeos fall of twenty, we knew it's not an overnight process, it's kind of like our city infrastructure projects, projects there. There's a lot of planning, there's a lot of discussion.
Always cough the hitch, I don't even tell you about. This particular, you know, this particular case, the county and the city, we're right here next to each other, we're intertwined. You know, not a good asset town that was there.
Yeah.
City's right next to that one. Interested in, you know, doing something, so I think it's teed up.
Yeah.
Ready to do, to start doing some, some hard planning, hard thinking. So I'm glad you guys called this work session.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate your time, all of us.
This is, this is good, so.
So at this point, you guys will contact Anderson and Perry?
Well.
But it will be county money, how does this work, I'd say that's like number one.
That'll be, John's heading out to a conference, right? Yeah, after speaking, but.
And Dane's, I think Dane's out of town, so it'll be like, but I can discuss with Dane Maven, but he's Jake's son.
Um, yeah, we can, we will chat and figure out, like, let all the interests sort of snow.
And we'll get together, we'll have a meeting, uh, with Kim and whoever.
So the bus barn, my understanding is the school is willing to sell if if you find them a place to move their bus shed, is that correct?
Uh, that's that's not correct.
Not correct?
Yeah.
So they are willing to sell?
Well, yes, they they they're willing to make a move for the betterment of paramount.
Yes.
Yes.
But there's no.
And, I mean, they can go to the mill site.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're a much smaller footprint and there's, they don't have to wait for the flood mitigation, there's places that are not in the flood.
Yeah, there's a pad right now.
Right where you're looking at, that's not being mitigated at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they they're taking a much smaller piece, they don't need all of the infrastructure of a group of people.
And I I think, I think the current law is like one point six five acres. It's it's not a large lot as it as it sits right now, and of course, it's a rectangle, so it's it's kind of like looking at other things, one point six five acres, if you make it a square, in one point five acres may do their work.
Anybody else?
All good.